Good afternoon. The August 9th, 2022 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
During today's work session, we'll be receiving four updates. The first is on Title IX, which will be presented by Jackie Saxemeyer, Title IX Coordinator. Ms. Saxemeyer?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jackie Saxemeyer.
Yeah.
And I am the new District Title IX Coordinator here within Legal Services at VPS. A little backstory of who I am. I just recently came from the Bivard County Sheriff's Office, working as a deputy for close to 10 years. During my time at the sheriff's office, I had the opportunity to work as a school resource officer for close to seven years of that. I also worked as an investigator with our Special Victims Unit. So that's a little background of who I am. Today, what we're going to be doing is discussing what Title IX is, and we're going to be talking about the grievance process associated with it. So what is Title IX? Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 prohibits for federally funded educational institutions from discriminating against students or employees based on sex. Under this federal civil rights law and as a federally funded district, we have the responsibility to act promptly, effectively, and equitably to complaints of gender-based discrimination and sexual harassment in order to protect our school community and also to ensure that we are following Title IX regulations put in place by the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. So what does Title IX state? It states, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." Now, it states, "No person." That means no student, no employee, no third party who is participating in our education program or activity in the United States. Title IX does not apply outside of the United States. On the basis of sex, we are referring to biological sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation. In order for this to meet its standards, the complainant has to be participating in our education program or activity, meaning that they have to be participating in the operations of the district, to include in-person, online education programs, employment, extracurricular activities, athletics, and performances, and so forth. So Title IX-related issues, there's three main categories. There's sex and gender-based discrimination, there's sexual harassment, and retaliation. Under gender-based discrimination is basically when an individual is discriminated against or treated unfavorably due to their specific sex. Listed here is several different examples of where this type of behavior takes place. It could be program equity, recruitment at admissions, and access, pregnancy, and the huge one that we typically hear about is athletic, employment, recruitment, and hiring, and the list goes on. Sexual harassment is what we refer to as a umbrella-type term. It actually refers to several different types of complaints, which would be quid pro quo, hostile environment, sexual assault, domestic violence, stalking, and dating violence. So quid pro quo, what that is exactly is when an individual asks for a sexual favor in exchange for some type of special treatment. So an example of this might be, for say, a teacher on student-type behavior, where a teacher asks for some type of sexual favor or conduct be performed by that student in order to maybe receive an A grade in that course. So that would be an example. Hostile environment is unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe, so pervasive, and so objectively offensive that denies them equal access to their education program or activity. An example of this might be where's a student maybe was sexting another individual at school, another student, and that sex maybe got out, that nude photograph of that student, and has now been sent maybe to numerous students inside the school campus, making that individual feel uncomfortable coming to school. Sexual assault is any type of sexual act directed towards a person, which includes rape. Sexual assault includes rape, sodomy, sexual assault with an object, fondling, incest, and statutory rape. And then there's dating violence. Dating violence is violence on the basis of sex. Typically is when the complainant has been in an intimate or social-type relationship with the respondent. And domestic violence is violence on the basis of sex, when the complainant has been in a relationship, typically it's going to be either with a spouse or a former spouse, or an individual that the complainant has had a child in common with. And then there's stalking. Stalking is engaging in a course of conduct directed at a specific person which causes substantial emotional distress. Underneath that term is also cyber stalking. And then there's retaliation. Retaliation is coercion. It could be intimidation, threats towards an individual who's been a part of the Title IX investigation. So it could be towards the, it could be towards the complainant, it could be the respondent, or it could be a witness who's a part of the investigation. For instance, maybe a group of students approached the respondent and threatened to hurt them if he or she does not tell their side of the story correctly, for example. That could be a threat of some kind. That would actually open up a separate Title IX investigation as retaliation. So this is kind of the Title IX Regulations history timeline, so to speak. So since 1980, the Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights has had primary responsibility establishing compliance standards to be applied to investigations and enforcement of Title IX. Under the Obama administration, OCR focused on protecting rights of victims and survivors. It also issued several guidance documents referred to as a Dear Colleague Letters to outline schools' obligations under Title IX. Under the Trump administration, OCR sought to incorporate due process protections designed primarily to protect the rights of respondents. And in November of 2018, OCR proposed the most detailed and comprehensive amendments to the Title IX Regulations to date. In August of 2020, significant amended due process-oriented regulations took effect. We currently are abiding by the 2020 Regulations currently. Just this last June, June of 2022, OCR published the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking outlining proposed changes to the Title IX Regulations. So they have come up with new proposed regulations which may remove some of the obligations under the 2020 Regulations while remaining some. However, this, we are not believing it won't take effect until the summer or fall of 2023. So currently, we are sticking with the 2020 Regulations, and that'll be basically my job to make sure that whatever new updated information comes out, I'll be following it. So steps before the investigation process. Step one is the complaint. A complaint can come in in person, it can be by email, it can be, you know, a phone call, and it can be made by the complainant themselves, it can be by a parent, a guardian, and also can be made anonymously. Any reports need to be made to the Title IX Coordinator there at the school campus. So there should be a designated Title IX Coordinator there to report the incident to. Obviously, all school board and school employees are mandated reporters and should notify the Title IX Coordinator if they do hear any type of sexual harassment complaint. So the complaint is going to be alleging some type of sexual harassment. In order for a formal complaint to take place, the complainant must complete a complaint reporting form and also state that they would like to have an investigation completed. So there could be a complaint that come in and state that they don't wish for an actual investigation to take place, which is fine. We will try our best to accommodate them with their wishes. However, in order for them to go through the full investigation, they do have to state that in their complaint. If the complainant does not wish to file a formal complaint, the District Title IX Coordinator has the discretion to file a formal complaint based on the results of a violence risk assessment. So what I mean by that is an assessment to determine whether there's a compelling risk to the health and safety of the school community. And types of complaints of that sort would be predatory conduct, it would be threats, any type of abuse towards a minor or child, or use of weapons that have been somehow incorporated into this complaint. So I would have the discretion to go ahead and open up a complaint myself. Step two, supportive measures. So what are supportive measures? They are non-disciplinary, non-punitive measures designed to protect the safety of all parties in the educational environment. A few examples would be a stay-away contract, maybe a class change, or an escort to class. It could also be a referral to seek counseling. A formal complaint does not need to be made to provide supportive measures. So even though if a complainant does not wish to pursue the formal resolution process, we still will give them supportive measures. And it won't just be the complainant, it would also be the respondent as well that we would offer these supportive measures to. Step three is the informal resolution. Informal resolution is informally resolving the matter in lieu of a formal grievance process. A formal complaint must be submitted first. So we must have them, you know, complete that form and state that they want an investigation before we can do the informal. An informal resolution is preferred by the complainant. If it is, the Title IX Coordinator will assess whether the complaint is suitable for informal resolution. All parties and parents must agree with informal resolution of discipline. So both parties, both the complainant and the respondent, have to agree to this. If during the process, say, maybe the respondent is not in agreement with the discipline in place, then the informal resolution will cease. And the investigation, the formal investigation will then continue. If they do, if both parties agree to this, then no investigation will be conducted. The incident will be resolved there. The formal investigation process. So once the complainant has determined, okay, I want to go through a formal investigation, I don't want to do the informal resolution process, the Title IX Investigator assigned to the school, who typically will be either the Assistant Principal or the Dean, will immediately initiate the investigation. Their first step is to conduct interviews with all parties and relevant witnesses. The parties would include the complainant, the respondent, and any witnesses. However, they're going to come up with a game plan, so to speak, on how they're going to, how to work through this. Typically, the respondent is going to be the last person that they interview. They're also going to collect any evidence that's relevant to the incident. Maybe there is text message communication between the parties, they're going to try to retrieve those text messages. Maybe there's video surveillance on campus of the incident taking place, they're going to try to retrieve the video. And those types of incidents where law enforcement is most likely going to be involved as well with these types of cases, they're going to be conducting their own criminal investigation. There are going to be times where maybe there is pictures that depict nudity of juveniles and whatnot. Obviously, that is illegal to be in possession of, it is considered child pornography. Those types of images and whatnot are something that law enforcement is going to retrieve, and we basically, at the school level, will be documenting that those types of images have been found. We will not be collecting the actual photograph. Maintaining thorough investigation records and notes is very important when the investigator is conducting their investigation, that maybe while they're interviewing an individual, they are taking thorough notes of what's taken place, what they're saying. Those notes are going to be a part of a case package altogether, a final investigation report. It's also important that whatever evidence that they collect, they notate who they received the evidence from, and what day, what time. There's a lot of different paperwork associated with this investigation process, so they need to make sure that they are completing everything as accordingly. So at the end of all of this, they are going to compile everything and have one investigation report. The formal resolution. After the final investigation report is completed, the school Title IX Coordinator will refer the matter to the assigned decision-maker to review and determine whether policy has been violated. When we refer to the policy, we're referring to the 2266 Board Policy on Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex during, I apologize, during a program or activity. And also, the decision-maker is also, is going to be somebody who has not been a part of the investigation whatsoever, somebody who doesn't know anything about it, so that it's non-bias. The decision-maker will determine the appropriate sanctions and discipline when a policy violation is found, and draft a written determination that outlines the rationale. They'll determine as to what sanctions they may put in place. It could be a suspension from school, it could be expulsion, it could be that they are no longer allowed to participate in extracurricular activities. The decision-maker will then work in conjunction with the Title IX Coordinator to prepare a Notice of Outcome Letter to be shared with the parties. So both parties will be made aware of what the sanctions are in place for the respondent. There is an appeals process. Any party may file a request for appeal and write, and writings to the Title IX Coordinator. For this type of incident, it can't be that maybe the complainant is not satisfied with the sanctions put in place against the respondent. That is not going to be something that is going to be grounds for appeal. There's three main things. The Title IX Coordinator, investigator, or decision-maker had a conflict of interest or bias, or against the complainants or the respondents. If that is the case, which is sometimes a rarity, they will, the whole investigation may have to be completed from scratch, if that is determined. New evidence that was not reasonably available at the time, the determination regarding responsibility or dismissal was made, that could affect the outcome of the matter. So, so to speak, say, a new, new video came out from the, the school surveillance, we were able to capture it, the incident taking place. If that is something that is going to affect the outcome of the matter, then they, that may be grounds for appeal to review that video. Procedural irregularity that affected the outcome of the matter, this process is very lengthy, and there are different points where individuals have the opportunity to review evidence. After the investigation is completed by the Title IX Investigator, both parties have the opportunity to review the evidence, any statements that were provided. And therefore, they have approximately 10 days to review that information and give any feedback that they have regarding it. So for example, if, if they're only allowed maybe three days to review that information, when they're allowed 10, that could be a procedural irregularity that could cause an appeal. Important considerations. No discipline can be enforced until the investigation is completed. Both parties have the right to due process. They have the right to hear the allegations against them, have the opportunity to speak on their behalf, to review the evidence, and have an advisor of their choice be present with them. And when I talk about an advisor of choice, that could be potentially an attorney, it could be a friend, it could be a teacher, a counselor. However, they are not there to be a voice for them, they are there to support them during this process. Law enforcement criminal investigations can delay school investigations but not relieve the school of its duty to respond. Like I mentioned earlier, law enforcement criminal investigations are going to probably be taking place at the same time we are doing a Title IX investigation. That does not stop us from doing our investigation. However, there are going to be times where law enforcement may say, they're not done interviewing a witness at this point in time, we really need you to hold off before you continue. I will be communicating with the local agencies to find out when we can proceed. However, so it really does depend, it may delay us a little bit, but we still need to try to act as promptly as possible. Again, the investigation process is very lengthy and take a minimum of 30 to 60 days. So like I was mentioning earlier, the complainant and the respondent parties both have 10, 10 days to review the evidence against them. After that, the case package, so to speak, goes to the decision-maker. The decision-maker gets 10 days to review the information. If it goes to an appeal process, it's another 10 days. But that's not also putting into account the time it spent for the investigator to do the interviews and also to collect all the evidence. It's very time-consuming. There is no expectation of FERPA. So basically, students' records are somewhat exposed. There's no redaction as far as names during these reports. So, and I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, but also the advisors too, who are there to, not represent, but also to be there as support for the parties, they too get access to the, to any sort of statement and evidence. And lastly, all Title IX questions refer to the Title IX Coordinator. There, this is a very rough understanding of the process, there's a lot to it. So most likely, parents are going to call and have questions. Please, please, if you could refer it to me, and I will try my best to help assist you. But I don't know if anyone has any particular questions at the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Saxemeyer, and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
We appreciate the briefing this morning. Board members have questions? Ms. Campbell?
Thank you for that presentation being so thorough, because this is a thing we talked about as we went through the policy revision process in the spring, but helps. So just a couple of, just quick questions. In the slide that talked about who can report, it's, you mentioned it, it can be reported anonymously. How does, how does that work? I'm assuming then you can't really do a formal investigation because you said you have to, they would have to fill out something. What, what, what happens with those?
So basically, we were going to, with that information, try our best to speak to any witnesses and whatnot. I may at that point be the one to put the complaint in.
Gotcha.
If it's anonymous.
Are, are our charter schools getting the same information and training? I know they're responsible to have their own Title IX coordinators, and we, we don't have, do Title IX work for the charter schools, but are they receiving? Because I know when we had, who's your assistant that we just lost?
Valerie.
Valerie. And we had some, you know, she had offered them some counsel, but they are responsible for their own process, right? But I was wondering, how much of this are they getting?
So I can tell you that I just recently attended a training that was put on through a TICSA, and we definitely did have administration from our, from our other schools attending that. So yes, they, they were participating.
Good, thank you. And I'm not trying to grill you, I promise.
Nope.
This is not your initiation. Who typically would the decision-maker be?
So, and I'm not too sure at this point in time, but what we're doing is, is making a pool of individuals here within the school district that we're going to be choosing from. I just don't know who those members are.
It'd probably be an administrator of, at some level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, sorry, I've got just a few more. The, can the, you, I think you said this part, but I, I was writing something. The advisors, those can be the parents, correct?
So the, the child is going to be allowed to have their parent there regardless.
Okay.
This is an additional person.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the 10 days, and I think I remember this from the revision process, but that's, is that, that's workdays, right, not calendar days? Or is it calendar?
I believe it's calendar days.
Okay. And then the last one is, in the last slide, it said, "No discipline can be enforced until investigation is completed." I'm going to assume that we have our regular discipline that's going on, and if, if it's obvious to an administrator that something has happened, just like any other situation, somebody shoved a kid into the wall, just because it's a Title IX doesn't mean that we can't have any discipline whatsoever alleged. Am I, correct?
Unfortunately, we cannot do any sort of enforcement of discipline, so until this process is completely completed.
I'm just going to put hypothetical because make sure I'm understanding.
Yes.
So if we, so we have awareness, our staff has awareness, not of something that's brought to us because of a reporting, but that staff, you know, saw themselves of, let's say, a sexual assault or whatever, then we can have that, the respondent still on campus for however many days until this process is completed?
There is a possibility, yes. There is an emergency removal process that would have to be done through the Threat Assessment Team.
Okay. And of course, you said law enforcement handles it, so I'm assuming that also in the case of sexual, sexual assault on a campus, that law enforcement can handle it?
Yes, ma'am. The law enforcement is definitely going to be involved with those types of cases.
Which means that the student may not necessarily be still on campus.
So there, there could be other things put in place, as far as a no-contact order or whatnot, but that is completely, it's going to be separate. That's going to be with law enforcement, you know, put in, put in, put in place by a judge.
Okay.
So, you know, and like I said, unfortunately, we won't be able to, to put in any type of discipline. However, there is that emergency removal that we may have to look at, or again, we're going to be doing the supportive measures of trying to separate the two.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm thinking somehow, when that part was written, that...
Let me just, if I can interrupt, just for clarification, law enforcement will also be, well, obviously, if, if, if law enforcement is warranted, they will be involved, and this does not preclude law enforcement doing what they need to from a criminal perspective. I think that's maybe what you were getting to. And so in fact, there could be, there could be criminal determination as well, and as such, law enforcement would take the actions that they would.
Correct.
Yes, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, law enforcement is completely separate from this. So if they get arrested as a result of the sexual assault, they would be in jail, but we can't do school discipline. Her process is only school discipline process.
But which means suspension, expulsion, none of that can happen.
That's correct.
I just have one, it dovetails onto Ms. Campbell's. So I want to make sure that, can we move somebody to another classroom? Can we separate them? Can we have a no-contact? I want to make sure that that's okay, because there could be issues where that could arise.
Yes, so everything you just described would be supportive measures. So yes, we'd be able to change their classes, we would be able to have an escort of some kind, and then the stay-away contract. Exactly.
Thank you.
So I just, something that might be different to you guys, and it's going to feel different to our parents. In the past, whenever we're handling a case, and it's an investigation that doesn't involve Title IX, and we're looking at a stay-away contract or moving classes, typically, the person who is the complainant, the person who came and brought the complaint forward, stays in the class they are, and the respondent is moved. As Title IX, it is, everybody has to be treated with, with equity until the investigation is done. Meaning if somebody has to move, we need to look and see whose move impacts the other less. So you are absolutely going to get phone calls from parents saying, "Why was my daughter moved?" Or "Why was my son moved?" When I'm the one that brought forward the complaint. It's going to feel different, it's going to sound different, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys were prepared for the impact that that might have as we move forward with Title IX. In terms of the decision-maker, we, we move forward... In, in terms of the decision maker, we, we moved forward and had probably 100 people trained in the decision making process. That's an exaggeration, it's more like 50 now that I'm thinking about the room. So, it just has to be somebody that's unbiased. And so, right now, the directors and a lot of our, our people up here, we're all trained to be decision makers, and then, of course, we have to have a separate appellate person. So, Misty Bland and Danielle McKinnon are right now kind of our focus for the appeals process if we have to, if we have to select them. But we knew the discipline piece, you guys are going to start getting phone calls, and we knew the safety measure pieces, the, um, safety plan, not the safety plan, supportive measures are going to also feel different. So, we wanted to make sure to give you guys plenty of warning when you, when and if you start getting phone calls.
But just to reiterate, that's not a new, that's not a new policy or procedure that's based on what the district of Brevard County Schools has done, it's, it's based off of this 2018 law that we are...
Correct. It's based on the regs, the regulations that are attached to that law. The laws may be 50 words, the regulations are 100, about 1,500 pages. So, it's all based on the regs.
Ms. Saxomire, thank you. We've never had this in-depth conversation about Title IX, and it's your first day on the job.
Yes.
Or in front of us, so I just wanted to say thank you, welcome aboard.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you.
You did very good in the crossfire right there with Ms. Campbell, she was bam, 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 so great job.
I'm so mean.
Welcome to the team. A lot of us went through the COVID stuff, so this is your way of catching up with that.
There we go.
All right? In your face, here we go, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So, it's okay if you don't know the answer to this, and I might be getting in the weeds, but just because Ms. Campbell's question just kind of made me start to, a little bit. So, you had mentioned on one of these slides about OCR, and in 2020, kind of went in favor of due process of respondent, and then things might...
Yes.
Is, so what Ms. Campbell was asking about, is that something that was modified over the past few years and maybe will be changed, or do you have any idea?
So, currently, we are under the 2020 regulations, but there's going to be new regulations coming out. I'm, hopefully, I'm under, I'm understanding your question correctly, and, but we don't know exactly. I mean, they gave us the proposed regulations that potentially are going to be coming out, but right now, there's a process going on. I believe it's a 60-day comment period that anybody can basically put comments in regarding the proposed regulations that they have. So, but we don't know fully what's going to be taking place until fall or summer of 2023.
Okay, thanks. And I want to say welcome to the team as well, and congratulations to Ms. Moore, because I'm sure she's really glad that you're here, taking a lot of the weight off of her shoulders. But I also really appreciate and respect your background, because it couldn't be more applicable to this job. So, thank you, and welcome to the team.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Almost done, I think, I just have a few. And I don't think any of them are too hard. Some of them were already asked, so you're good there. This one, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to, but you had mentioned if there was, if they get to informal resolution, that there is no investigation. But prior to that, you had indicated that if there was something, if there were certain circumstances met, that you could make the decision to go ahead and do an investigation regardless. So, is there a scenario where we might come to an informal resolution, but you look at it and say, no, we need to do a formal investigation on that?
So, for instance, and this is prohibited, you can't, you can't do an informal, informal resolution when there's an incident where there's a teacher and a student involved of any type of sexual harassment. So, no formal in resolution would be able to take, take place, even if the complainant said, well, I, I'm okay with this, what happened against. So, that would be something that we would continue on with a formal.
And then, the appeals process, well, I, I guess this kind of applies to everything that you have said here. So, you mentioned that the determination was made whether or not our district policy had been violated. But our district policy is based on the regulations of Title IX, right?
Yes, so we have a policy in place, the, the 2266, that goes over our grievance process. So, and also, everything involved with Title IX is inside that, basically, that policy. So, if we see that any part of it's been violated during the final end, when the decision makers come into a conclusion, that's when they're going to accordingly come up with some type of sanction.
So, is there, and if you don't know the answer to this, okay, is there a difference between our policy and the Title IX regulation? Like, is, is there any place where we're in, sorry, where we're in conflict? Like, have we defined the appeal process differently than Title IX defines an appeal process? Or, or are we, is, is our policy basically Title IX reg?
So, I don't know, our appeal process, like I said, there's only three main, three main grounds that we can go off of, but I don't know if that is any different from any other policy that we may have.
Our policy is based off of Title IX, so the grievance process is going to be in compliance with Title IX. Title IX says you have to have, like a lot of things, but they'll leave up the, whether it's calendar days or workdays, up to you and your definition. So, there are some things in our policy that were left up to us, and we've defined those. Like, it's calendar days instead of workdays, yeah.
And so, going back to the area that was as of concern about us not issuing discipline prior to the investigation being completed, that is not our determination, correct? That is Title IX requirement?
Yes, that is a Title IX.
Okay. And then, I think that's it. Does the rest of the questions dealt with connection, alignment between our policy and Title IX? I think that's all we have? Anybody else have anything from Ms. Saxomire? Right. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the team, and great job handling your, your first presentation to the board.
Thank you.
And the firing squad.
Just wait till Matt asks a question. That's me.
Not allowed to.
All right. Our next topic then is going to be truancy, and will be presented by Christopher Reed, Director of Students at Risk. Mr. Reed, welcome.
Nice QR code, like a little dinosaur.
I did not create that.
Yeah. Good layout on your power.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Chris Reed, I'm one of the directors at Student Services, and I'm going to tell you a little story about why every day counts for, in the realm of attendance. So, the first thing I want to share with you all is there's, we're, we're changing our expectations, or changing one of the key metrics that we take a look at with regard to attendance. And that new metric is chronic absenteeism. And I'm going to do my best to share with you why we're making that change to looking at, at chronic absenteeism instead of average daily attendance. Average daily attendance has been what we've traditionally looked at in, in school districts across the state, across the nation, and we're all starting to catch on that chronic absenteeism is a better metric to influence change. So, the reason average daily attendance gives, can give a false positive. So, here in this graph, I, I have three schools here in Brevard County, and I've got in blue the average daily attendance for last year. And we can see we've got 89.6, 90.22, and 86.29. B+, A-, work, right? Everyone's happy, that's very exciting to see. When we take a look at the chronic absenteeism, it starts, the data starts to tell a different story. We can see at Apollo, we had 39% of the students met the definition of chronic absenteeism, 35 at Southwest, and 43 at Cocoa High. Chronic absenteeism is defined by missing 10% of the possible days of school, and that's for any reason. So, I say, I'm going to tell you a story about attendance today. Any day you're not in school for any reason is a lost learning opportunity. A lost learning opportunity that we can't regain. There may be valid reason, there may be invalid reason, but if we miss a day of school, that's a lost learning opportunity. Any day that a student is absent from school is also a missed teaching opportunity, and a, and a, a teacher's penalized because you must catch that student up for what was missed that day. So, it slows their momentum of the instructional delivery. So, again, average daily attendance is, with the metric that we used to look at, we're evolving into that chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism, at the end of the year, would be missing 18 days of school or more, due to the fact that we have 180. When we look at chronic absenteeism throughout the school year, we'll be looking at 10% or more. Now, all data I share with you today from last year was, again, for any absence with the exception of Q for quarantine. So, students that were out for quarantine still had lost learning, and it was a missed learning opportunity. But for this presentation, we did remove Q from the data, but doctors' notes, court dates, unexcused, excused absences do meet the definition of chronic absenteeism. So, again, we are evolving to chronic absenteeism to prevent that false positive that, that average daily attendance can, and define where our real problems are. So, as I said, chronic absenteeism is missing 10% of, of the school days possible for any reason, okay? And then, that little asterisk, we didn't count quarantining in Brevard's data. So, it counts, again, all absences, including suspensions. What we want to emphasize is the number of days missed. Again, as I said, a missed day is a missed learning opportunity, a missed teaching opportunity, and no matter what we do or how well we do it, it's still a lost learning opportunity. So, we look at that academic impact, but we also want to focus on that social and also the behavioral pieces that come along with that. Again, starting, stopping, beginning, taking a break, restarting, any gap in that instruction will have an impact on that instructional delivery. So, we focus on prevention and problem-solving strategies, okay? What we found is being punitive in nature isn't as successful as being more, taking a more of a restorative approach to that. But curbing chronic absenteeism is a very difficult task, and the best way to do that is through relationships, and I'll attempt to, to share some successful ways as we continue. So, becoming chronically absent is really easy. So, if you take a look at this, this graphic here of a calendar, you can see missing two days a month, two days a month throughout the school year, sometimes three, you easily can hit the mark for that chronic absenteeism. Our current attendance policy is you are allowed nine unexcused absences per semester. So, already, we're allowing kids to miss that 18-day mark or that 10% mark. You can see by this illustration that it is very simple to reach that 18, or 18 days absent or that 10%. And we, again, want to make sure we have awareness of that, so that we can curb those lost learning opportunities. So, let me share some stats from Brevard. Last year, '21, '22, we had 13, over 13,000 students that were chronically absent from school. To put that into perspective, 9,432 were chronically absent the year before. So, our situation is getting worse. I don't have a clicker here, so it's clicking on its own, sorry, it's got a mind of its own, guys. So, last year, last school year, 21% of the students in pre-K through 12 met the definition of chronic, being chronically absent. 21% missed more, 10% or more. The year before, it was 14%. Okay, now, I give you that stat of 21 from last year, please know that as you saw on that, that first slide with Apollo and Southwest and Cocoa High, some schools are higher, some schools are lower. That's our average of that 21% from last year. And again, some kids miss 10%, some missed 60%. So, this bar graph gives you an idea of where we, how we look and how we're performing in our elementary schools. You can see on the left side, I've got a red line that indicates for you the number of elementary schools that fell below that 10% overall average, and you can see the majority of schools fell above that 10% average. What I want us to focus on is, is that third grade, third graders that are chronically absent, and traditionally, that would be first, second, and third grade being chronically absent, you're twice as likely to being, likely to be retained, okay? And the result of retention is, you're not meeting the state standards, you're not meeting expectations on the state assessment, you are behind. And again, the majority, as you can see by this slide, are not, are above that 10% target line. The story continues through middle and high school. We can see that one middle school was at 10, all others were beyond the line, and in high school, we can see that two were below that 10% mark, and the others were all above. And we can see the different percentages, as I said, some schools are near 10, some schools are a little above 10, some schools are well beyond that 10% average overall. Another stat to look at is students that miss 0 to 4 days per semester, or 8 days per year. There's some statistics that show they have an 87% graduation rate. Those that miss 15 to 19 per semester, or up to 40 a year almost, have a 21% graduation rate. So, this begins back in elementary school, when students start to miss those learning opportunities, and it begins compounding. And it compounds over time, more and more learning is missed, and then students miss out on those academic, social, and behavioral wins. This slide puts, tries to tell the story of what that looks like over time. So, this is a study of a cohort of students in Florida, and it takes a look at them from kindergarten through sixth grade. So, what it shows here is that first blue bar is 37%, that was their kindergarten year. They missed 37% of the possible days of school that year, and missed out on 37% of the learning opportunities for whatever reason, right? And that, that path of absenteeism continued as that student went on, although it got better. So, we can see first grade, second grade, things were bad, but getting better. Third grade year, we can see at that 6% mark, again, that, that data point I shared, two times more likely to be retained in third grade. What I want you to see, or what this, this graph is trying to, to explain is, over the course of those seven years, by being chronically absent a lot or a little, this child, by this end of sixth grade, has missed an entire year of instruction. So, I ask you, what grade is worthwhile of us skipping and, and cutting out, right? No grade is worth that, but when we piece them together, piece by piece, that, that can result, and in the situation in this study, this, this showed us that we have a year's worth of lost learning. So, the good news of this slide is, it got better as they got older, so our interventions began to work. What I want you to see is that it, it compounds over time, and then lastly, is that we can miss up to, in this case, a year's worth of learning. So, let me tell you about, a little bit about how we're addressing the problem, and this is where things will get a little difficult. Chronic absenteeism should be its path of its own, truancy should be, should stand alone as well. We cross lanes all the time in my role. So, we've got a truancy path that deals with unexcused absences only. Chronic absenteeism deals with all absences, okay? It's a lose-lose, but statutorily, we have rules about unexcused absences and a path towards truancy. Chronic absenteeism is our indicator of people are missing out on good learning opportunities, and we need to get them back in the building. So, let me talk to you a little bit about what we do to address the problem. And so, I want you to think of a triangle, and at the base of that triangle, we've got our tier one interventions that we do that are effective for the majority of people. And then, and that's the masses. So, we like to say that that would serve about 80% in a perfect world. The next level would be tier two, and we would shoot for about 15% in that level that those interventions would be effective for. And that last piece, that most intensive, or that tier three, would be for stu, about 5% of the, the students. And so, look at this as we address the problem, is that will be that continuum, the majority to the minority. So, it begins at the school level with truancy or chronic absenteeism. The school is where 80% hopefully of those problems can get addressed and/or be solved. And our procedure at the school level is, at three unexcused absences, we make an attempt to make communication. Parent phone call, conference, letter. At five days, we attempt to do that again, to discuss what we did at three days, and to continue to problem solve and figure out what we have in place. We put interventions in place, and we start documenting what we've done in Focus to be able to continue that work. Now, I will tell you, one of the greatest things about Focus is going to be telling our story over time with students. There are hundreds of ways that schools document right now and have been. Focus is going to unite us and give us a one-stop shop to tell those stories of those interventions, from school A to school B to school C. So, I'm very excited to be able to unite all of our schools and be able to tell that story of what those interventions have been. The second wave that we move into, if we're not effective at that tier one at the school level that has the most influence on our students, would be to involve our truancy team here. Now, we have five members on the truancy team, and they report to me. What our procedure is, is that eight unexcused absences... What our procedure is, is that eight unexcused absences, someone at the school will activate a member of the truancy team. At eight, it's just putting them on our radar. It's helping us know that we have a problem at a school and that we're starting to partner. We're starting to be part of that think tank with that school-level team that's intervening. Again, we're just a partner at that time. At 15 days of unexcused absences, that's where the truancy team officially gets activated and starts to take a leading slash supporting role instead of a supporting role. At 15, you meet the definition of being truant. And therefore, we can start to begin to put some sanctions and some different types of interventions in place. At 15, for example, in a 90-day period, is when we start to put into place the suspension of permits and driver's licenses, okay, for students age 14 and above. And again, that, as they refer to truancy, it's not a, this is now your problem. It's a partnership between the school and the truancy team. And the team is a party of five, and they are very good at making home visits and sharing why and helping families connect the services that they didn't have. But they are a party of five. So it's again in a partnership with schools. More often than I would like, those strategies are ineffective between truancy and school, and we have an option to start to involve the court system. New last year was truancy court. We had the opportunity to launch here in Bervard. And the first step before we officially begin truancy court is something that we call Court Diversion Program, truancy court diversion. When you're enrolled into the truancy court diversion, we serve a subpoena to a household to appear in front of a judge. And in front of that judge, you're given two choices on your first day. A, start coming to truancy court every week and reporting to the judge, or B, enroll in the truancy court diversion program. Truancy court diversion is designed to say, hey, we've been trying to get you to come to school, mom, dad, kid, and it hasn't been working. We're serious, you have six weeks to get it right. And students in that diversion program have six weeks that they have to have no unexcused absences. Okay, the diversion program is for students age 6 through 15. If you are not successful in the diversion program, you immediately get enrolled into truancy court. And again, the difference is you come every week to court, and you appear before the judge. Same rules apply. She wants you to be successful for six weeks, but anytime, she can extend that longer than she, than needed or longer than the six weeks if needed. Again, it's court-ordered, you meet weekly. We do have a positive spin on things. We try and make it as productive for the students. Again, it is punitive, you're coming to court, you're subpoenaed, there's law enforcement involved. But our goal still is to instill a love for learning in school. And therefore, we need to form that partnership and educate families and students the importance of coming. So in truancy court, that is our goal as well, just like it was back at that first run. When that is unsuccessful, we have a program called Sins Fins, Children's Need of Services or Families in Need of Services. And in this, this is designed for students 10 to 15 years of age, so it's a little older. And the teeth behind this program really is, this is where we're looking at removing a student from the home and placing them in a setting that will ensure that the student comes to school. Many times, the barrier is the parent or the guardian in their life. Many times, it's a student, many times, it is both. But that is a piece of the equation that we have, that the judge does have the ability to turn that intervention on in certain cases. But we like to walk through all of our lower, less intensive interventions before we consider something like that. The last is potential parent prosecution. And this would be the involvement of the state attorney, and this would be, this would be a misdemeanor charge for any parent or guardian that is not meeting the statutory requirements of their child attending school. This happens the least, and we haven't had this happen under my watch yet. Not that it hasn't happened, but it hasn't happened under my watch yet. So addressing the problem. Things that, again, at the school level that we're doing, that we're having great influence and impact on, one is parent liaisons. Last year, we launched a program in late September, early October, where we put parent liaisons in some of our buildings with the most need to remedy chronic absenteeism, truancy, attendance in general. And we put those liaisons in place, and it was not the greatest launch because we had a great difficulty, we had great difficulty in hiring people. We are proud to say we have that program in place again this year in 35 of our schools, and we hope to fill all those vacancies and start from the very first day. And I was on a campus yesterday, and I saw a liaison already at work on their first day. They knew what to do, how to do it, and where to go. So that is behind us now of training some of them. Again, those parent liaisons are a key role at some of our sites. What I want us to understand, though, is curbing attendance is about making connections and strengthening relationships. I can, I can be punitive, I can bribe you, I can take things away. But really, that desire to come, to be part of that school family is what's going to get kids in that school. Knowing you're missed when you're not there, knowing that someone's counting on you to be there and be there on time, both for the adults and for the students, is an important piece. And that's what those liaisons are able to try and do. Okay, they're strategically placed each morning at places in the school to make sure that their hot, hot kids are met, are greeted, and are felt like they're loved and are ready, that are recognized that they're there. Okay, what I want to note again is people have the most influence over others. And again, I can turn my truancy team on for any problem, but when they go knock on that door, they are a stranger knocking on that house, okay? Everyone's on their back heels. But if a classroom teacher or someone that your older sibling, your older child had or your sibling had knocks on the door, that's a familiar face and someone that has influence. So just know this, that school, those school-level interventions have to have that connection. So the graphic shows that we strengthen those relationships at school and home. The ways that we're doing that in schools indirectly would be the training that we're doing at sites and conscious discipline where we're looking to build a school family. Other ways that we're doing that is the mentorship program and PBIS. And again, what we want to think of through those relationships being strengthened is cooperation, coming to school, following our rules, doing our academics. Cooperation comes on the coattails of a connection, okay? A bond, a relationship, that rapport. We can't get anyone to do what we want them to do until they want to do it for us or for themselves. So we've got to form those connections, okay? Relationships matter. And again, the judge has influence, right? But they're not friends, and they're happy to be gone from that situation when they're in court. Truancy has influence, and parents are happy to have them gone when the situation is fixed. School and that team have the most impact. Two quotes from two principals that have liaisons in their building, very similar in nature. Catherine Murphy at Endeavor says, "Parent liaison forms connections with disconnected families. Attendance is multifaceted, liaisons are able to give time needed to support our families." Gina Teji at Cambridge Elementary, very similar. "Having the connection between school and home to encourage consistent attendance and provide assistance to families has been invaluable." Again, a lot of times, families just need to be connected to resources they didn't know they needed or to see the value and importance of coming to school each day. As I've already said, we have a district team. We have five members on that team that work under me, and they're geographically assigned, a caseload. Chris Ward, Stephanie Brandenburg, Andrea Jones, Janice Waldemeyer, and Lisa Kizer serve as our attendance team. To put, to give you some data of the statistics that they work with, last year, 630 truancy referrals were submitted to them. Okay, so as I said again, a school said, we've done A, B, and C, and 630 times, they clicked the button to say, help us. Those 630 cases that we received, we had a 64% closure rate. Now, I'll be honest, once an attendance problem is started and you reach our truancy team, it's very difficult to break that pattern. That 64% is a lot of kids that moved away, right? Or enrolled in a different setting outside of Bervard. So I don't want you to think that, as amazing as our team is, that is an impressive stat that is influenced by some data that wasn't in our control. What I want to point out, though, is that that next line says, "Students with absences greater than 25 unexcused." We had in Bervard 2,293 students that had 25 or more unexcused absences. And only 27% of those cases got open. So of the 2,293, only 630 were open. So what that tells me right now is our truancy team is being underutilized. Okay, we're not, we're not pushing that button to activate them. But I also need to recognize that if all 2,293 got activated and to those five people, right, they could knock on, I don't know how many doors you can knock on on a day, but it's not 2,293. So we've got some room to grow at that tier-one level of A, our tier-one into two, activating truancy, but also determining what can we strengthen at that school level still as well. Okay, remember, 80% falls down at that tier-one level. Truancy starts to become that two and three. So again, the core functions of those, of the truancy team partners, find those families and connect them with resources. And again, this year, we created truancy court. We have a manual that we use and that we are partnered with our judge, and we're seeing some positive results that I'll share with you now. So truancy court is done with Judge Serrano. Mr. Gibbs and I get to go over there on a very regular basis. We have had 44 cases go through the truancy court of the, so the 44 is 36 plus the eight. But in truancy court, the 36 cases that are open, we've had an 82% success rate. Now, not all of them are done yet, so that's a very high number. Like, again, that's great, that's going well, right? Well, that's of the eight cases that have run their true course, right? So a lot of them are still pending and open. But we're doing creative things, like bringing the families in before school started and saying, are you registered? Here's a registration packet. The judge is saying, be there tomorrow, turn it in, I'll be seeing you next week. So we have, we're having great success and have a great partnership with that judge. But again, that's a very small minority of our students, 36. Again, I showed you two, over 2,000 that could meet the criteria for this potential service. Sins is that children in need of services. And we've had eight students go into the sins court. And that, as, I wouldn't call that a success rate, but 18% of the cases end up leaving truancy and going to sins or were in sins before we launched and had a truancy option. What is exciting, though, is those 36 kiddos or those 44 kiddos that when we decided truancy court was the intervention to unlock for them, those students, when they got their subpoena to report, on average, had a 51% attendance rate. Terrible, right? Well, under the supervision with the judge, they had a 4% absenteeism rate. Okay, so truancy court works. Just again, I can't put 2,260 kids in truancy court. We've got to find a way to effectively keep doing this while effectively meeting the masses and catching students well before they become a problem. And that, so I've been telling a truancy story, but really, the intervention is intervening when a kid becomes crony. Okay, intervening when a kid becomes crony. So in two weeks, when we've got 10 days of school under our belt, okay? Missing one day meets the criteria to be crony. Okay, the question is, when do we start? What day of school do we start to say, that's a warning, right? Is it the three unexcused absences? Teams at schools, that's what we're trying to work with and develop those systems to be proactive instead of having to get to this case where we can be really effective. But we're super proud of this, it is effective, but we can't put everyone into truancy, regrettably. Or, regrettably, I don't want anyone in truancy, I just want those kind of stats. So we do every, as, again, when you connect with the judge, you're connected to resources. When you're connected to one of our truancy personnel, you're connected to resources. Student Services has created this manual that's online with the QR code, as you mentioned, Mr. Susan, that can connect families to those services that they don't know that they need. No one wakes up and says, I don't want my kid to go to school so that they don't learn. But they don't yet see the value or the importance. And so there's a list of different things that are in our resource manual that we're helping connect families to and providing them a way to connect to them outside of our presence. That is all I have for you on the story of attendance and why every minute matters.
We're making sure that your link works.
Crossing my fingers. It's on a postcard that we hand out.
Chris, thanks for the time, the presentation, and everything else. Chris used to be a principal in my district, and I loved him. Caused havoc when he left because everybody loved you so much. But he had a good support staff come in, and Wes was, he was good when he came in. So as the principal, but wanted to get into this. This is amazing, this last piece, because it's where I've been kind of wrapping my head around is, is that we know that it's not just taking a kid and saying, come back to school, that makes them pass eventually. We know the reason that those students are actually leaving and that they have truancy and that they have issues. There's stuff going on at home, mental health, hotlines, crises, all that stuff. I wanted to say thank you so much for putting that together at the end. It was phenomenal. Where are your difficult, because, look, healthcare, dental, and vision resources? If we refer those kids out, are they receiving the care? Or is there a capacity issue there, capacity issue with mental health? Capacity, you see what I mean, like? Because this is what I'm getting at, and I'm sorry I'm rolling here. We spend so much time working on a student inside of our schools. I mean, we change diapers, we do all this stuff, right? We have gone, the school district, from what we did 30 years ago to what we do now is so many services, right? We've taken on those services. And my argument in some cases is that many of the other municipalities, cities, infrastructures, and all of those things have gotten a free pass on some of that stuff. And let me explain. So like, when I go into Temple Terrace Boys, or Temple Terrace over there at O'Gally, there's students inside of there, and the county has resources and things that they provide that family and that child. We provide our resources and everything else to that child. The city of Melbourne provides resources and all those things to those child. But I don't know if we're always coordinating on those children. Does that make sense?
100%.
And when I see this, I'm like, wow, this is amazing, because you've got it all right here. So the next step is, how do we get everybody to collaborate if that's not happening? And then where are your stress test pressures? Because this is, this is it right here. This is where our grades are at, this is where everything's at, right here. This is our A to B, this is everything, right here. So how do we help you with the mental health referrals to make sure that those get taken care of? How do we help you with the healthcare, dental care, visual resources, that kind of stuff? Is there anything we can do?
I didn't come with a punch list for you to take on here, but more is always going to be more helpful, like accessing mental health. We submit mental health referrals, and those agencies are limited of how many people they can intake, right? And so we're continually adding more and more and trying to serve them. But personnel is the key there, and it's a double-edged sword. The better we get at referring, the more stress we'll put on any agency as well. So our procedures are sound, it's just a matter of connecting those services. And then knowing why we didn't get connected, that's a piece we're working on fixing as well.
So for instance, you have, we were talking about aftercare programs. She's here, thank you, I can't wait for your presentation. The thing is, is that in some schools, we don't have aftercare programs. So we've relied on, say, like, Boys and Girls Clubs or Melbourne's after-school programs or whatever that is. But I'm not sure if we're coordinating with the resources and stuff like that. And we may be. And the only reason I say this is, is that I was in Chicago about two months ago. And they have a truancy situation just like this, except it's on a massive scale. And they've actually taken all the entities together, and they work on it together. Okay, here's what we have. In this area, we have a food desert or whatever it is, and we need to, we need to get access to food. You see what I mean? It's not just, so many times, kids are looking at us and they say, well, the kids aren't doing well in school because it's your fault, Mr. Chris Reed. But it's actually the fault of the community. And what it is, is that those individuals inside the community are not doing as much as they can, or we could coordinate with them. That's what I was getting at. Is there an avenue for us to do that? Are we doing that? What's happening?
We're working to strengthen that all the time. Again, though, we don't have a monthly meeting globally across all entities.
Trust me, I understand that.
To organize, you know, there's different pieces. Like, what you're describing, Mr. Susan, is very much like the community partnership model at Endeavor, right? That is an exemplar of what could happen across the board, where we're providing medical, we're providing dental, there's on-site mental health. But that's a pinpoint in Bervard County right now. But that's what you're describing. But that's what you're describing, sounds similar to that. And I don't know what you wanted to add.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I think, um, the care coordination piece, different, as you look at different models, they have different care coordination. So when you look at this truancy model, by having sins, fins in there as well as the court as well as the school, the answer would be, that's our care coordination. And then we add the piece of the referral for services. You know, if you look at the, um, uh, some of our mental health models, there's a different care coordination and different agencies that do that. DCF is the umbrella agency that actually is, um, designated by the state to do care coordination in a lot of these areas. The problem is, there's so many areas. I mean, you hit, you hit the nail on the head, there's so many areas and it, and it's, I, I don't, I, I hate to use the word impossible because I always think there's a way through. Um, but to get all of the right people, uh, for all of the right reasons at the table is, is a challenge.
Oh, I, and I understand, especially with COVID, especially with all the things we're dealing with. I just, Dr. Mullins goes up in front of all these legal cities. And he gives a presentation over our children and he does all those things. And I'm looking out at many of those cities and counties and they're doing things, they're trying to do stuff, but it's not coordinated with us and it's not our fault. But I'm trying to figure out if there's a way, because we met with a bunch of the care providers, mental health counselors, stuff like that, in an off-cycle meeting about two and a half months ago. And we were talking about, what do we need to do to go forward? And the whole mental health arena is a completely other topic of discussion from the way the insurance is covered between the provider's capacity and all of those things. Then you look over health, dental, vision services, like, we don't have the capacity to do everybody. I'm great that Endeavor has it, but why not all the kids, right? So, I don't know, I just, I just, first off, didn't want our school district to take the heat for everything that happens with a child. The second thing is, is that I'm going to start having conversations with some of our mayors and city council members, like, "Hey, man, like, what else are you doing for our schools?" Or, "Hey lady," I don't want to say "man" because then I get to say that it's only men that are city council members, but the thing is, is that we need to coordinate. You know what I mean, councilwomen?
I will tell you, there, uh, probably the, the model that is most cohesive right now is through, um, I want to say Family Promise of Brevard.
Right.
And it is, uh, the umbrella over it or the agency that, um, is over it is, of course, the county commission. Um, so that, they have a really good model. I've read their plan a lot. Again, limited in scope, but great, great coordination of services. So I think we just, we just need to find the model that's in place and, and, and build on that. But you're right, that's one of the biggest issues. But I do want to say, because, um, one of the things, and I, I've only been to court once, Chris goes every week, um, Paul is there every week. One of the things that we talk about and that we see is it's when our families come in and their kids have been out 50, 60, 80 days of school, they come in and they real, they, they bring, they, they have lost hope. They, they don't know what else to do.
Right.
And so when the court starts saying, "Okay, first things first, let's get your, your child to school." And whatever the response is from the parent, if the parent is, "I can't get him there," the tru-, uh, one of our truancy, um, social workers is there saying, uh, if, uh, we'll, we'll make sure he's on a bus. If it's that he doesn't have clothes, we've gone out and, and got clothes. So that service piece in the court, I, I can't overstate. Because when the parents get there, whatever, whatever reason they lay out before us, we've got to figure out. But truly, it is a lack of hope at that point. So just giving them back hope that their child can succeed is probably number one in, in, in our purpose there.
And we have over 2,000 there that are possible and we've only got 600. So how do we get more of them referred?
Uh, yes, and serve them as well, right? But both, those are both important.
And the budget for truancy comes from the county? Where's it coming from? Is it?
The court itself?
Yes.
The, uh, the, that, that's, hmm, I don't want to say county because I think it's state. The county had to apply to the state and get approved to add a court.
Okay.
Like they bear the burden of the officer serving the subpoenas. That was something we had, a procedure we had to work through as well. But, and obviously, we're not paying the judge's salary, the clerk's salary or her legal aid salary. Those are things the county are taking on.
We're paying the, "Hey, you need a ride? You got some clothes?" All of those things.
Correct. The five truancy people that, the truancy resource teachers who work for us, that work under me, that are activated at eight and 15 days of unexcused absences. Those would be personnel hired that are staffed by Brevard.
Some of these kids coming in from juvenile justice courts, anything like that, juvenile, any, any, any situations like that where the sheriff's has his, uh, budget as a part of any of the services for any of these children?
So the, um, the, the, the Brevard County Sheriff's part is, they serve all the subpoenas. They do all of that work. Um, DJJ, the, the Department of Juvenile Justice has, have a different requirement for attendance. Meaning if you don't go to attendance, you get taken off a probation and possibly arrested again. So they don't actually, I don't think we've had a single student go through truancy court that was under DJJ.
What I mean is, is that if the DOJ understands that if we don't put them into, if they're not getting arrested and sent back into our jail system where they're being fed, where there are all the stuff that's going on there, there's revenue there. Like, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is there's so many multiple agencies that wrap around that one student that was truancy? And that when they're, when we're looking at the costs of that one individual on the entire group, and then we laid the brunt of the conversation of why they didn't graduate or why didn't they do that stuff, those agencies also need to be a part of that conversation too. That's all. Okay, I'm done. Thanks, Chris. So I'm sure you guys have, I'm going to go use the restroom.
Um, so I have an, I have an important question. So one of the alarming data points that we have in Brevard Public Schools that we don't really talk about too often, um, is our students that are homeless or in transition. Um, so I'm just curious if we have data to say, you know, of that 2,000 students, how many of them are in that, in that situation and that circumstance? And, and the reason I ask that question is because, um, so often, sometimes people in the public, when they hear about truancy and kids not coming into school, you know, they, they blame the parent, they, they don't understand the total situation that a lot of our students are really living. Uh, when I worked at Harbor City, we had multiple families that would drive up in the cars that they slept in with their clothes tied to the top of the car. Um, it's a reality, it's a reality here in Brevard and it's an alarming number. So do you have data that tells us how many of these pieces are actually those students that are really struggling and really need that help and support?
So I oversee students in transition as well. So yes, I just don't have it with me today, right now. So that's an easy data point to be able to pull, um, our students identified as in transition and to pull their attendance. And we, we look at grades, we look at attendance and we look at, um, promotion, retention, credits, um, that they have. And as you would guess, they're not always the greatest of statistics. And again, it's continuing to keep those, those resources connected to those kids. Often at court, we'll realize someone's in transition or they're living with others, they're in a hotel, we'll start to connect them with those services. But, um, that is a data point that we look at and we're going to get better at looking at. Um, but for this purpose, we just looked at them as a whole, so they're part of that data set.
So the reason I ask that question is because when we have only 20% of those cases that we can functionally handle with our, um, with our staff, you know, what prioritizes each case? Why do we go to one versus another? Is it because of the number of days? Or do we take into consideration the circumstances that are leading to these children having those absences in the first place?
So right now, the way our system works is, we don't, we, we can see there's a problem, but we, we, we don't act until some certain things have been done at the local, at the school level. The first step is getting that truancy team activated. Once activated and they're not having success at that level, an application comes to Ms. Moore and I. And Ms. Moore and I review that application of past interventions, current attendance, things that have been put into place. If they have an IAP or 504, meetings and, and changes that have been made. And we decide which of those cases can go forward. We had set a goal, um, and we've exceeded what our cap was supposed to be. We were supposed to do 25 cases. We got to 34 this year, um, in, in truancy court. So we were just trying to make sure that we didn't break the system before we started. So again, first step is identifying and taking care of those school level steps. Then truancy sees they're not having success and then truancy makes a case to Ms. Moore and I. And we both have to agree that to send that student forward.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And just to, if I could just piggyback on that response, one consideration is age. They age out at 16. So if somebody's like 15 and three quarters years, we're not going to start them on truancy process because right after they get to the judge, they're going to say, "I'm 16, I'm out of here, have a nice day." So it's not going to be successful.
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're not doing those interventions at the school level, correct? It just?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, because we want those kids to continue on to graduation. Um, just really quickly, are the statistics that you mentioned, the, you know, third graders being twice as likely to be retained in our graduation data, is that our data? Our BPS data?
No, that's from various studies throughout this presentation. I just pulled from various studies over different years.
Um, and then just to, just to clarify, the sins, fins process, that's not BPS directed, right? That's the judge is saying, "Okay, we've got to this point, now you're going into that situation."
Yes, yes and no. We have the option to pursue that, but it, it does require that the judge is on board with that. And Mr. Gibbs, you might be able to explain that a little better for me.
We can access sins without going to the judge. It's easier that they have their own standards and what they would take. And before we had truancy, we tried to go that route, but they weren't taking many of the cases for various reasons, including parents refuse to cooperate and sign paperwork. So they can't use those, that paperwork as evidence in court for sins if the parent doesn't agree to the relief, right? They can get it, they'll know that they are truant or whatever, but they cannot use it as evidence because Florida's statute. If the judge in truancy orders sins, fins and transfers it to sins, fins, they no longer have that barrier and they can use those records.
I know that's the last case, that's not what we want to see.
Right. And the ju-, it's the same judge, so that's a beautiful partnership that we have.
And then just the five people who are on that team, this is not their only job, correct?
This is their primary role. This is, this is their, their primary role, yes. And I mean, so what they're doing is they're intervening, but they're also training teams, helping them understand the reports, helping them run their own reports, helping them lead meetings, identifying interventions for families.
Okay, okay. Um, did we have these five in place? I know truancy court is kind of a new, that what we're doing now, the model we're doing now is new, but did we have these five in place before?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm glad, thank you for updating us on how the parent liaisons are going. I know, I just, just as a point of remembrance for us as the board, as I recall, that's being funded by ESRS, ESRS funding. And so we just need to be aware that after the next couple of school years, um, we need to decide.
This school year.
This, after, this next school year, okay, then we need to decide how are we going to continue to fund that if it's a need? Because clearly it's a need. I don't think, I mean, I'm optimist, I'm, I'm hopeful that this year we'll have fewer interruptions and our number will at least go back down to what it was, um, pre-pandemic. But, I mean, if, if, some of our schools are chronically, chronic, yeah, have a chronic, uh, chronic absenteeism problems. Um, and so, you know, we're going to have to decide as a board, um, are we going to find a way to fund those? Um, because if it's having an impact, making those first connections. Because I know our, our, we have social workers that can help with that too, but the parent liaison can be that first, you know, they're kind of that first connection, data gathering and information, you know, connecting families. And then, you know, and also, it's a lot easier to find a parent liaison, as hard as it was, than to find a social worker, because the social workers require such, uh, certain level of certification. And our parent liaisons, in my experience with principals that I've talked to, are often coming from our parents within the school. "Hey, would, you're a parent of one of our kids, would you like, we have this job to be parent liaison, here's the training," and, and it's someone who's already familiar with the school. And so, um, I think it's, if it continues to show through this school year that we have left of the ESRS funding, um, that it's, that it's been worthwhile, we need to, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund it in the future.
Chris?
Yeah.
It was great to have you as principal in my district also. Um, I'm curious, do we have a sense of what changed from the 14% to the 21%? What, is there a difference in the cases? Would we see something different?
So my best guess, to be honest with you, would be, we still had that virtual option. We had hybrid teaching. And so absenteeism wasn't possibly identified as, you know, we weren't identifying as much. You could be at home, participating minimally and still be marked present. So I do believe that that is part of the equation. It's tough to really say exactly what, but if I was to give the biggest number, why? That would be it. Also, again, as I said, in chronic absenteeism, that social piece, right? So, so we won't know the ramifications of missing the amount of school that's been missed um, for years to come, but we know that everyone is different than they were before. Um, we had those big gaps. So I would say that that's the reason is that we had, you were at school or you were not at school last year.
Oh, thank you. And Ms. Campbell talked about sins, fins, and that was my question also. So thanks for covering it. And Chris, thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Almost done, Mr. Reed, almost done.
All right.
Um, so when we moved into COVID crazy, we started taking parent notes for excused absences. Have we maintained that practice?
We have, but we are, that, that practice is ending this year. So what we had in place was if you were a symptomatic student, you could send in a parent note and you would be, have an excused absence. Okay, but again, sometimes you were connected to the learning at that time, sometimes you weren't. We didn't have a virtual piece. So you were, still were home. Some got connected to the learning material, some didn't, but it was an excused absence. Next year, we will not, we will still take parent notes, but they won't be considered excused absences.
When you say next year, do you mean the school year starting tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes, sorry, yes. I haven't, I haven't fully committed that that, you know, that's still hours away for me.
It's still next until midnight. He's still in denial.
We're, yes, hours!
Let's be clear, Mr. Reed, it is only hours.
Um, and have we communicated that to our parents? Do you know?
We have not made that communication yet, um, to our families. Um, we have communicated, uh, that to our principals, that, like, these are the available codes that we have for attendance and this is what they mean.
Okay.
They, they do still have the ability to send a parent note, as they always did pre-COVID. Again, the key is excused, not excused.
Right. Okay. Um, and you mentioned that we are transitioning in the district to focusing on chronic absenteeism as opposed to ADT. Is the state transitioning to chronic absenteeism as a measure as opposed to ADT? Or are we dual measuring?
So I believe the answer to that is yes. So on the, the state site, and I, I, that, um, I don't remember what it's called, the equivalent of our, our report card, there now, um, as of the last couple of months, is a chronic absenteeism rate by county, by, by, um, by counties across the state. So we are all catching up to this research that has been taking place for many, many years that this identifies problems instead of, um, feeling good about the overall.
Okay. Um, and then, um, right, two kind of comments as opposed to questions. One, and I'm just going to say this because I think it needs to be on record repeatedly, the state of Florida does not require compulsory education until the age of six. And so when you look back on that graph and the huge absentee rate in kindergarten, you know, I just want our parents to understand that even though the state doesn't require it until the age of six for, for children to be in school, um, those are still really, really important times for kids to be in school. And I think, you know, we see when it gets into like assessment time in third grade, those absences go down significantly. But I don't think we're necessarily taking into account the impact of the prior absences. As you said, you know, an entire year of education by sixth grade. So, um, I don't know why we still are looking at six for compulsory education, but anyway. Um, and then the last thing is, um, to you and Ms. Moore both, um, thank you for talking about the service piece in the court and how that allows us to really provide hope for the family and to, uh, you know, we say all the time, wrap arounds, our arms around them and get them, you know, the help that they need to be successful. Because I think that a lot of people, um, when, when the truancy court information came out to the public, there were a lot of comments that, "Oh, BPS just wants to arrest parents." Um, and, and I, I hope that in hearing this today that they understand that is not at all the case. It is, um, it, it is the last thing that we want to do. But that last thing, I think is important as well. Do we have a statutory requirement to address truancy? Like, is it, the state tells us that we must take action on this, right? It's not?
Yes, 100%, yes. So, so again, back to that statutory, statute dictates that three and that five at the school level, that our policy is, is born from that statutory language. And then compulsory, compulsory attendance is also from statute as well.
Okay. I think that's just important for the public to understand that it's not the district that's saying, oh, we're going to force you to bring your children to school. It actually is, is state statute that we are required to follow through on in the event that there was an issue with attendance with a child.
Yes.
So, thank you. And, and like I said, thank you for. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I would, not for today, because we're running late, but it would be really good to have cross-reference, and you may have already done this, our attendance data with our academic achievement data. Because, I mean, the three schools that you particularly pick, I already know those are some of our schools that we're focused on this year academically. But if we're, if we're seeing that our schools with the greatest rates of chronic absenteeism are also, you know, pretty well matched to our schools that are, you know, our lowest school grades and things like that, you know, that's really important to, to kind of see that equation. And we've talked about it, but if we can just make that direct correlation as much as we can.
Sure.
And I'm just going to put a little plug, because I know we're talking about culture this year a lot. We talked about it last year and this year. And I'm glad you talked about, I, I wrote it down, knowing you're missed. That is so important from the classroom level, especially to the school level, knowing you're missed. It works in the church world. We talk about that too. Knowing you're missed, you know, oh, man, we missed you. And I would just put out there, I would like to see sometime the rates of absenteeism for kids who are involved in things like music, CTE, sports, the things that really are engaging, you know, that we want every child to be in something like that. The intermurals that we've been, we were adding, those are just one more thing. If you have, I've got an intermural volleyball again today. I'm talking about, I'm talking about sports, Mr. Susan. That, you know, that those are the things that, you know, the student is going to come, these middle school students, because I've got a, I forgot a volleyball game after school today, and my team's counting on me. You know, those are the kinds of engaging things that, that change the culture and get kids in the building. So I'm plugging that in there. I'd like to see that someday, that cross-reference to attendance for students who are involved in those programs. Every now and then, Mr. Susan.
Ms. Belford, I can't help but chime in, you know, Ms. Campbell, you, you really hit on the conversations we're having as we dissect our student achievement, the data, the performance of our kids over the last year. And I would suggest there's been an unfair attention given to, Brevard didn't earn an A this last year. We didn't. We missed an A by one point. When you look at the growth we made from the previous year, like every district, we, we outpaced other districts, compounded by the reality of our absenteeism, whether it was a legitimate illness or it was quarantined unnecessarily, you know, of a healthy student, if you will, as well as our teachers last year. The number of academic hours missed is a missed learning opportunity and a missed instructional moment. And that's why we're, we're doubling down on understanding, how do we tackle attendance more effectively? How do we provide quality interventions at the school level? Not the least of which is through a strong connection with the school, but then also at those, those target points. We're hearing from principals, okay, this is a much better perspective for us. Rather than tackling perfect attendance for all, it's how do we really narrow our focus on the students who we're beginning to see where there are disruptions in their regular attendance? And the only, the greatest disappointment is, is we're going back to another year with no school achievement, uh, school grades this year as we transition into a new, a student assessment program. But I'm, I'm confident we're going to see the, the regrowth that we would have anticipated without such an impact on absences this year. So thank you for recognizing that as well. And I, I'll just, I want to give my thanks to Student Services for both presentations. And I, and I, the, the word quality comes to mind since consistency across both presentations. A commitment to quality process for keeping our kids safe and protected, as well as our staff, through our responsibilities to Title IX. But then also quality interventions for ensuring that our students can maximize the learning opportunities they have available in our classrooms. So my thanks to both Ms. Saxamire and Mr. Reed for your presentations and bringing us up to speed.
Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reed. Run quickly.
All right, Dr. Ivory, we're ready for you now.
All right, our next topic is Brevard After School, and we will be presented by Dr. Karen Ivory, Director of BAS.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me this time. So this afternoon, I want to talk to you about the updates that we have for Brevard After School Program and some of the progress and changes that we've made. So as you know, our Brevard After School Program is an enterprise fund, and it provides the services that we provide, our before-school services, after-school services, and summer childcare services. And we provide it to parents of students with BPS and to our employees. Because it's an enterprise fund, it abides by the generally accepted accounting principles. That basically means we run it as a business and not a government agency. This slide here is sharing our comparison of what we're, what other programs are throughout our county. Now, Kid Connection of Titusville, that's the one program throughout the county that has the same services that we have. And if you look at the bottom, the bottom is our 22, 23 services, and we are still less, less expensive. So Parks and Recs, of course, is.
I put it the best deal in town. She, sorry, Dr. Ivory.
Parks and Recs, of course, is the least expensive, but they don't offer as many services as we offer. We offer all of the services that our parents can possibly need. And, and as a matter of fact, when Dr. Mullins says this is the best deal in town, this summer, we also added daily drop-in rates, I mean, daily drop-in for summer, which we had never done that before. And we also added summer wraparound services. So if they attend a summer school program, then they could then turn around and have wraparound services. So I just wanted to share the comparison of what we have versus what we have throughout the county. So we have several fee options, employee limited use, and with employees, I'll get to that in, in another slide. But we have daily drop-in, morning-only program, afternoon-only program, full program, which is morning and afternoon, an annual pass, and a summer camp. Our morning program averaged, our average daily attendance for our morning program last year, for the entire year, averaged 895, that had average daily attendance amongst our 57 schools. Our afternoon program averaged 300, I'm sorry, 3,533. We have a student ratio of 1 to 25. So basically what that means is for two people, we have a coordinator and we have a group leader. A coordinator usually serves as a safety monitor, so they make sure that they're checking in parents, making sure the whole program is safe. So that 1 to 25 doesn't really count the coordinator, which is the safety monitor. So at 26, that's when we can get another employee. And that's important for some information I'm going to share with you later. And we also offer paid enrichment activities. Our paid enrichment activities can be anywhere from chess to the zoo to cheerleading. So each, each school has the opportunity to get paid enrichment vendors to come in and offer services after school. So our employee, now, this is the best deal in town, what the benefits to our employee. And I say that because I had two kids through the school system, and I used it both times. And my youngest kid just worked summer school program. So it is the best deal in town. So basically, the employee limited use. An employee can decide that they are only using it for 8.75 hours per week, and then they only pay $10.
Per week?
Per week. They can't go over 8.75 hours. And that's usually if they have a faculty meeting or if they come in the morning. They choose when they use that. Now, once they go over that, and we're monitoring that, once they exceed that, then they have the option of the AM, PM, AM, PM only. This also is for our SROs that work at our schools and our school health, health nurses. So once they decide that they may need it, then they can go to maybe 50 to 55% off discount, depending on what they say, what they use. So this is very valuable to our employees. So let's talk about our year-to-date expenditures. Remember when in April 2020, you, the school board decided to approve a fee increase, and it was for 5%? And it was because we had a negative fund balance. And I don't know if you remember or not, but the BAS pays the district approximately 2.2 million. But at one point, in addition to 2.2 million, the gas, which is sort of like a retirement, we weren't taking money out that the state requires. So this item in red, part of that benefit is approximately 400,000. That is also required to take out for our employees for retirement. So the, right now, our net revenue will be 1, $1 million after the 2.2 transfer and after that, about that 400,000 for them, for the gas. I want to share that, if you notice, we haven't in 2020, nor in 2021, due to COVID, weren't able to pay that 2.2 million to the, so this year, we are able to pay that. If you decide that you want to give, you want to keep it, let us keep it, we'll keep it also, but. So that's going to take our ending, our fund balance to 1.5 starting next year. So I just wanted to share with you. Now, if you see under miscellaneous sources under 2022, that is that, that is that county care is money that they gave us that when we wrote that grant form to offset some of the costs that we had for COVID. The miscellaneous sources are the rebates based on the credit card. So our net revenue after all fees for this year is $1 million. This slide is the 5% fee increase. Now, you approved the 5% fee increase in 2020. And the last fee increase was the 22, 22, 23 school year, which is this school year. Now, when, if you see these numbers for, in blue, that's the student participation for last year, which is still about 300 kids shy of what the student participation was when you approved this fee balance. So we're still missing like 300 kids. And ba, and basically, we can get kids, but we need to be able to have the staff to support them. So right now, our enrollment last year at this time, the first week, we're counting this kindergarten enrollment also, was 3,529. Our enrollment as of 12:00 PM today, and it's still growing, is 3,362. So we're about 330 off, but when you look at it, we are actually 160, we have 163 families that needs, that are requesting services this year compared to last year. Now, with, in addition, so the 411,000 is that revenue that, this is the light yellow one, is the revenue that's in addition to what we made this year. That's the revenue that we anticipate earning. That's based on the 2021 kids now. So of course, that revenue will increase or decrease based on how many kids we have. Now, right now, we do have a waiting list for some of our programs, but last year, we capped the programs. Basically, we didn't allow kids to register because we didn't have the employees, and we didn't have a way of getting the employees. They just weren't applying. This year, we have the same programs on a waiting list, and we're in the process of working with AUE. And we also offer a program where our custodians are our support staff custodians, IAs, cafeteria workers to come and work in our aftercare program. They can either do it as a temp G R, I think it's the job 30, which is a second job for them. We have that option.
Dr. Ivory, can I jump in there? Because I think you meant also the reduced revenue, although it's based on a 5% increase in the rate, based on current numbers. But keep in mind, the other big change is we go to a $15 an hour minimum wage. So the reason there's a reduction in revenue anticipated this year is because of that additional cost in salaries. Did I, did I say that right?
Yes. So the orange and the green are, weren't approved in the 2020 year. That's just information for you if we continue with the 5% increase that we've, that you approved in 2020. So 2023 projected revenue and expenditures. So when you add that 411,000, our anticipated revenue, in keeping with that 2021 number of students, is 7.8. So with our expenditures, our expenditures is the amount that we now have to spend because of the minimum wage, and we've added that into our benefits also. I mean, yes, our benefits. If you see the purchase services agreements, that amount is a lot different from the other because we off, we added the, last year, Kevin Thornton was able to get grant funding for our snacks in our program. This year, we are having to pay for those. So that's about 180,000 that we added to that. In addition to adding the temp G services and the job 30 services for our other employees, sometimes we have to reach out to AUE to staff program. And so those sites that are waiting to have waiting lists, we're reaching out to AUE as we speak to try to get some staff for those schools. Another thing we do is our district staff, they also go out to schools to cover the programs that we have waiting lists for. So in the end, at the end of the day, our expected revenue forecast is 257,000. And remember, it's a drop because of the added minimum wage. So that's based on projected revenue and minimum wage increase. And so let's, I want to talk about our current goals. So one of our goals is to increase hosting summer programs. Last, the year before last, we had eight summer sites, and this year, we only had six summer sites. And it was a difference of 500 kids. Now, our ability to host a summer site and our ability to keep our programs open is based on if we are able to hire staff. So one of the things we did is this year, we are also increasing professional development opportunities for our district staff. So when they go into the schools, they can support our school-based after-school staff. And one of the PD, the first, one of the first PDs that they did, and it was, they took it a long time ago, is conscious discipline. And we thought that they, we wanted our employees to use the same language that they used in the school day. So we have had our children trained on the conscious discipline, and we are going to resume our Gold Key. And that is accountability piece to basically check the quality of our programs. We're going to start doing those Gold Key visits in October. And that's it. If you have any questions.
And thank you for all the work that you've done, I know, to, to get that, and your staff that are working with you, to get that recruitment up and, and going out and beating the bushes to let people know what, to hire people, but also get the students back. So I'm very interested in that. Have we done that before, allowed others, BPS employees to take this on as a second job? Have we done that before? We have. Are we, we just doing extra outreach now? Is that a change as far as that goes?
So last year with COVID, we couldn't staff some of our programs if we didn't do it. So what we end up doing is reaching out to some of the principals and asking them, do you have any staff that may want to work extra hours?
Do we have, do we have to be careful of them not hitting that overtime? Or is it because it's a different fund, it doesn't matter?
So, right, we do have to be careful with that.
Okay.
So our staff, it can be anywhere from one hour a day to four hours. So if they are a six-and-a-half-hour employee like an IA, they would only work the one hour or the 1.5 hour. So that's the difference between the temp G and the job 30. The temp G is only working like an hour, hour and a half, an hour to 90 minutes of afternoon.
Which I'm assuming would be the busier time anyway. That would probably be when we have the most students anyway, right? Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I noticed here you got before and after school, art, wellness, games, STEM, music, nature, dance. What about sports? So let me, let me explain why, because there's another side slide in here that says, if I'm reading right, it says paid enrichment activities.
I think they do have some sports.
So I was over at, oh, hang on, I got, I got an idea. I'm just going to float by.
Just told you they have sports.
But I didn't hear that part because I'm, I have this whole other thing I wanted to say. I was over at the headquarters of AAU about six months ago. And they had mentioned that they would love to partner with a after school program to provide coaches and opportunities through the AAU to play your minimum sports. Would love to give you in conversation with them, if that's an opportunity, just to entertain. They have AAU coaches all over the county that are currently doing basketball and everything else. I think it's worth a conversation just to see if there's capacity there and opportunity to set up like an intramural soccer, maybe a little bit of track, right? Like, if anybody, if any of you have ever been to a after school, right, program, it is like, like massive chaos when they go in there sometimes because the kids are just so rambunctious after they get out of school, right? So sometimes, giving them the opportunity to go outside and do that in a organized way with a, might be able to do that. So I'll put you in touch with them.
Okay, do you think they'll also be interested in working with our 21st century program?
You just ask them. Now, here's the deal, and Dr. Mullins is having heart palpitations right now because I didn't mention this to him ahead of time. But AAU has great capacity at a low cost. And one of the problems we're having throughout our district is, is that children, when they go to play recreational league, they are having to pay thousands of dollars to be on these rec league teams and it's out of control. And one of the opportunities and the main reason I pushed to have sports is because our youth needs another opportunity. And many of the kids that we, that can't afford that may be some of the targets that need it. So um, they have, you can buy an AAU card for $14. And then they provide the coach and everything else. And it's on their insurance, so it doesn't have to touch us. It's a great opportunity. But if you told them you need X, Y, and Z, they'll try to provide it because they do it nationwide. It's just the capacity of coaches and setting it up with fidelity. That's all.
Okay. So you'll get me the information?
If it's okay with Dr. Mullins. I want to make sure it's okay. There it is. He didn't have a stroke.
So, but we have some guidelines to follow anyway, so it doesn't hurt to look at it.
Well, I think, I think when you look at them, I know all of the aft- after school activities that are offered, they are well within that scope. And they're already in our schools. They already have articulation agreements because they use our gyms. So thank you.
Any else before I? Um, a quick one, Dr. Ivory, I promise. What is the youngest age that we serve in VAS?
Kindergarten.
So um, we have, and, and I'm asking this because it's a conversation I've had with the community. And so I already know the answer to it. I just want them to hear that we have looked into it and the reasons why we're not. If we have VPK programs at our schools or we have teachers who have children under five that are in programs at our schools, why are we not providing after school care for the younger ones?
So after school care is based on school age. And a four-year-old is not considered school age. There are different criterias and responsibilities and inspections that we have to do once we consider the preschools. And that's through DCF and different monitoring practices. They had it a while ago, but because DCF changed the criteria or the state changed the criteria, now it is school age. And formerly, it was called school age childcare. But it's because of the rules based on DCF and, and the state of Florida.
And ratios, right? Because the ratios, once you go under that school age, the ratio shouldn't, is much lower.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Belford, I can't, I have to just make sure we recognize, give recognition where recognition is due. So for the first time in at least the last five years, Bervard After School showed a profit. At a time when we had reduced participation and enrollment, and that is because of Dr. Ivory's leadership, to dig into the program, to look at where there was excess, reconfigure, reassign, do some staffing adjustments and so on. Our administrators deserve a shout out because we had some tough conversations with them as well and programs that were running in the red. You need to take the responsibility of recruitment and bolster participation because we can't run programs in the red. And so Dr. Ivory, although a lifelong educator, adopted a very ambitious business mind approach to this program, as she should, because it is a self-supporting, revenue generating program. And should be commended for taking a program that we were literally a year ago talking about eliminating because it was no longer financially feasible and now has turned it around. So thank you, Dr. Ivory, for your leadership and, and doing the tough work.
You're welcome. And since you are thanking me, I really want to take this opportunity to thank my staff. The, they did a lot, they had to do a lot of growing and a lot of changing to some of the things that I wanted to do. And they did it and I'm happy and they're happy. And just, if they're listening, thank you.
And, and while we're on that topic, Dr. Ivory, I'll just throw this out there. This is all you do, right? You only do Bervard After School?
No, I wish. No, I don't wish. I don't wish. I don't wish. I like my schools. I, I, I like my schools.
Well, and I think that's important because I think oftentimes people think, wow, well, you know, they've got someone to run Bervard After School and they've got someone to run this. But the reality is, can, can you just share some of the other things that fall under your responsibility?
So I am a principal supervisor. I have nine schools. I'm also over, I'm also responsible for major discipline for elementary school. I'm also responsible for K-12 reading plan. I am also responsible for summer school. I'm also responsible for ASP and I just got guidance.
You're a rock star. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Her biggest responsibility is her daughter, who's wonderful. And I got to meet her at graduation at Rockledge, so she's amazing. Good lady.
All right.
One of my former principals. Another one of my former principals.
Yes, yes. The last topic on our agenda for the workshop today is our Head Start update. And it will be presented by Dr. Wendy Smith, Director of Head Start. Hard act to follow. Few hard acts to follow. But I'm here to share with you today our Head Start update for August. As I always share our vision and mission, I want you-
Wait, wait a minute, Dr. Smith. It really isn't a hard act to follow because I, don't you have like a state award-winning Head Start program? I mean, like-
Well, we presented to the region for, it's coming.
You, you've got your, you've, you've got all, your own big shoes. I just got to give credit where credit is due.
What is this award? What is this?
We, we, we will get to that. Yes, we will.
Today? Today?
Yes, in these slides.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I promise. I promise.
We've been at it a while.
But I know, I have never been here this long. I usually present first. So with our vision and mission, I have some key words that I'd like us to focus on as we go through this part of our presentation. And in our vision, the word "community", the words "quality education", the words "dedication", and the words "collaboration". We hear that a lot throughout our, our message this year. And we too share it in the Head Start program. So this year, our 2022, 2023 Head Start locations remain the same. There are three in the north area, four in the central area, and five in the south area. We have funded enrollment of 624 that has not changed with 34 classrooms. 19 are our Head Start VPK, which means Head Start four-year-olds. And 15 classrooms are Head Start three-year-olds. The four-year-old classrooms are capped at 20 students and the three-year-old classrooms are capped at 17 students. I do want to remind you about our community assessment that I presented the last time. And due to that community assessment and some enrollment, we decided to move a three-year-old class from MEMS to SADRI. So we still have the same amount of children, the same amount of Head Start locations, but we did make that change based on our community assessment. So now MEMS has one three-year-old class and two four-year-old classes, where SADRI now has two three-year-old classes and two four-year-old classes. And we can make that adjustment annually if we, if we so choose. So the agenda for today is going to be a notice of our, our award for 2022, 2027. I believe what Dr. Mullins was talking about, our Region Four Leadership Presentation, our POP schools, Improving Family Services to Our Families, Enrollment, and we'll end with our Dental Hygienist Update. So first of all, we are going to celebrate our Notice of Award. As you recall, we wrote a baseline grant. We were awarded our baseline grant for the next five years. So big sigh of relief. I had no, no worries that we weren't going to get it, but you always just wait for that letter to come in the mail and say, we received that. So our Notice of Award is for a five-year project period. It began July 1st of this year. It will end June 30th of 2027. Our initial budget period, beginning July 1st through June of next year. So this is only a one-year budget. Our federal funds are $5,406,317. Our non-federal match is $1,351,579. And our total budget is $6,757,896. Now, going back to that non-federal match, it is required to be 20% of our federal funds. And the way we receive our non-federal match is twofold. One is cash and one is in kind. The cash mostly comes from our VPK certificates from our four-year-olds. And our in kind comes from volunteer service hours, our educational consultant that we hire, and services from such agencies like Bervard Cares. Also part of our award, we have governance, leadership, and oversight capacity screening. This is a requirement within the first 60 calendar days of the start of the five-year period. And Mrs. Belford, I want to thank you for signing this. It is now being reviewed by our Policy Council, which is basically the school improvement or School Invisory Council for Head Start. So it's in their hands now. This supports our organization in making sure that all the governance requirements are being fulfilled as well as looking at the successes and changes that we need to always have a quality improvement for our program. An additional requirement, which will also require Mrs. Belford's signature and will be forthcoming, is the health, health and safety screening. This must be completed at each Head Start site within 45 days of the start of the school year. We need to make sure that our policies and procedures are there to protect our children and keep them healthy and safe. And again, it also identifies where changes need to be made and to build capacity for meeting our children's needs. As previously spoken to you about in, in, in a previous presentation, we have our program goals. These are part of the baseline grant. But I want to remind you how they are aligned to the BPS strategic plan. We wrote program goals that promote school readiness, which match our academic excellence. We wrote school goals to retain a high-quality workforce that matches the exceptional workforce. We are strengthening parent engagement and utilizing data to recruit families for our Head Start program, which relates to our community connection. And also, we are working to improve our management systems, which relates to operational sustainability. Our Region Four Leadership Presentation, I'm extremely proud of, we put in to present at the Region Four Leadership Summit in Atlanta this summer. So we took some of our coaches, my educational consultant, my assistant director, Terry Barlow, and myself up to Atlanta. And we were actually able to offer two sessions over a three-day period. We had over 100 participants who chose our breakout session. And the title was "A Compelling Mission: Implementing Quality Coaching Makes All The Difference." Basically, what this was, was our coaches were telling other Head Start grantees how we are using our coaches to push out to every school site on a weekly basis and provide professional development and support for our teaching teams. I've talked about our teaching teams before. It's not just the teacher, but it's the teacher and the two IAs. And now we are bringing in the family advocate as well for our instructional coaches to coach them to be a strong support for the school. So we had an hour and a half presentation twice, like I said, for over 100 participants. And a couple of the comments from the survey was, "The Bervard School District Leadership Team was amazing. They have done some great work over the last year and a half and are definitely paving the way for other coaching programs. I have learned so much and can't wait to implement new things in my agency." A second comment was, "I would like to thank the presenters for conducting a well-needed training and showing how effective coaching looks." They also provided suggestions regarding resource binders and monthly calendar that I will implement at our centers. Awesome session. So what I have challenged my team with is, okay, we presented at the region. Let's go big. Let's go national. We want to go to the national Head Start. And we want to make sure that we put Bervard Public Schools Head Start on the map nationwide. So stay tuned. I am required to talk to you about providers on probation for the Head Start programs. This does get a little bit cumbersome and, and a little bit confusing. So I'm going to do my best to have you understand as things are also changing at the assessment level, pre-K through 12. So as, what you see on the data, or the data up here is for Flickers POP data, Head Start schools in the last five years. Now, Flickers is this kindergarten screening test that kindergarten students take within the first couple of weeks of school. What that data did was showed the quality of the pre-K program and how they got the kindergarten students ready. So the cutoff to not be on a, identified as a POP school or provider on probation is 60% or higher. So the Flickers assessment was, was the, was the tool. And the provider is each elementary school. Now, it is for VPK students. So that doesn't only include Head Start. That would include Step Forward and Blended as well, if they had those at the school. I'm only sharing with you the schools that actually have Head Start. Couple of them have the other programs as well. But these aren't all the inclusive of the VPK programs. So it measures the children's readiness in kindergarten in the areas of phonemics, phonological awareness, and some math. Last year, no schools were able to go on to POP status, even if they were under the 60%, but you were able to come off. So let's look at some celebrations we have. Let's take a look at Coquina's Head Start program. They went from 50% in 2017, 18, 43% in 18, 19, 19, 20. We didn't have the Flickers. And then 2021, they went up to 62%. So they actually got off POP status. So huge shout out to the Coquina team. Before I go on to Jupiter, I want you to take note that this data is, is basically a year old. So it's 2020, 2021 data that you get months after that beginning of the school year to help provide support for that school. We won't get this year's POP data, I'm sorry, Flickers data, beginning of the school data, till October, November, December for last year's pre-K program. That's where I say it gets a little cumbersome. Jupiter Celebration, they went from 54% in 2018 to 2019 to 75% off POP status. I also want to make note of Sherwood Ele- I mean, Sherwood Head Start at Sherwood Elementary School. But 100% of their students scored at least 60% or more on that screener. So new this year, just to make it a little more confusing, remember our VPK will also be assessed three times per year for the year for progress monitoring as a continuous monitoring tool. For the school year 2022, 23, this current school year that starts in ours, right? There aren't going to be no, this is a standard setting year. So POP status will go away. And then all schools at the end of this year will end their POP status and new readiness rates will be set for the 2023, 2024 school year. Kind of in line with, with what's going on with the AK through 10, 10th grade. Next on our agenda is we're continuing to strengthen our advocates who provide those services to our families, much in the way that Mr. Reed was talking about previously with the parent liaison. with the parent liaison. Advocates receive that target coaching by my instructional coaches now, as part of a team and not a singleton at the school. The advocates are participating in social services competency-based training program this fall. We have monthly staff development for the advocates on conscious discipline, and how to best present that to parent groups within the Head Start program. They do use the Parents Conscious Discipline Education Curriculum, and have, since I've been with the Head Start program. And also, one of our goals is going to be improving father-figure involvement. And that, that is what our advocates will, will have as part of their goals as well. Our enrollment, I'm excited to announce that we anticipate starting this school year at 90% of funded enrollment. Today, we have 527 children who've accepted seats and are registered within our program out of our 624. That is at 84.4% capacity. And I believe Ms. Barlow told me, we offered 30, 30 seats today. So then we wait for that parent to accept, come in and register their child, and they have a little bit more time, because they don't begin tomorrow, but they do begin a week from Wednesday. Last but not least, a update on our dental hygienist and oral health. The first three bullets happened last year, so as a recap, due to us hiring our dental hygienist and her support, 85% of our enrolled children have an ongoing source of continuous accessible dental care. 57% receive preventative care and a, or a professional dental exam. And we were able to case manage over 70 children who required additional dental treatment. And case management may be, like you were speaking with Mr. Reed, taking that child to the dentist, having our advocate drive the parent there. New this year, this summer, our staff collaborated together to develop classroom tooth brushing procedures and created a short video demonstration for children that is just precious. I've watched it a few times. And this is the exciting part, finally, finally, finally. We have our technology in place. We have our dentist off-site available, with our dental hygienist onsite. And onsite dental exams will begin August 24th, and that will increase that 57% of enrolled children receiving a dental exam.
Very nice.
And that concludes my presentation.
This is the shortest one of all.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
I knew you needed to go get something for your...
No, that doesn't have anything to do with it. We just enjoy you presenting that way. I'm sure that they will pontificate forever, not like myself.
Oh, my heavens. Oh, Lord. Okay, can I, I'll jump in there.
Go ahead, Ms. Belford.
Why does it take so long for the Flickers data to come back?
Oh, that is a good question for some state-paid people. I have no idea.
I mean, because even FSA comes out faster than that.
Good question.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but Flickers has been done electronically recently, right?
Yes.
Right. So it's, it's not even as though it's like paper-based.
And remember, that's, I mean, it's transitioning out with the Star Early Literacy, and so more to come on that, I'm sure.
So maybe it'll come faster. Ms. Klein told us that the new stuff's going to be coming faster, so I'm hoping this will come faster.
Yes, I'm hoping so as well. So maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised.
I love the Father Figure Involvement Initiative that you're looking at, and I'm wondering, because I, one of the things that I, that the legislature focused on, particularly the Speaker of the House for Florida, he focused on a similar initiative, Fathers. Is there, I don't know if there's any funding attached to that, but is there a way that we can partner in any way, or just take a look at that? And I can't remember what it's called right now, I'm sorry, I have to tell, but when you said that, I thought, oh, legislature had that. They, they passed something that talked about, that I think it was grant funding to organizations that provided some kind of initiative. Does this bring anybody else's thoughts?
Yeah, I just can't, I...
I don't know.
And you can email me. And we do have funds to support the Father Figure Involvement. Our program goals, and so, yes, some of our funds that I shared with you can be used to support that. And we're extending it, that's why we say "Father Figures," because it doesn't necessarily have to be the biological father. It could be an uncle, a grandfather, an older brother, a mentor, a community member. So we, we just want more men in the lives of our young kids.
I love that. And I just wondered if there's any, any opportunity for cooperation with what the state has going on that's, you know, or if it's, and they just passed it, so they may be still setting up. But I'll, I'll make an note to myself to go back and look at that and see if I can send that, a resource to you.
Sure. Thank you.
So, you got Ms. Klein? Anybody else? Questions for Dr. Smith? No?
No.
Good. Phenomenal. Thank you so much for all you do.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you immensely, and look forward to that next presentation at the, on the national level. With training. All right. Does any board member have anything else to discuss right now? All right. No further business, then we will adjourn, and see you all in about an hour.